Probably the town mayor may not know because we got a lot of growth here in this town. And you'll need that mic.
Okay. Well, thank you Mayor Infeld, and I want to thank Edie for inviting me to be the guest councilperson. So as some of you know, I grew up here in Waverly. Dan and I actually went to high school together. And I moved out of Iowa after attending medical school in Iowa City and lived out in New Hampshire for a few years and then out in Montana for several years. So I currently work at the Waverly Health Center as a psychiatrist. So I've been back here in Waverly since 2010. So I'm looking forward to this month. It should be interesting.
Great. And you also chaired the Bartles Board, did you, for a while?
Yes, I'm on the Bartles Board right now.
Yeah. So your stamp is all over the place. We thank you for being with us. We look forward to the month. You have full voice, of course, but no vote. At this time, I will entertain any comments by the public on any items not on tonight's agenda. It's always nice to have public here. We don't always have comments. So this is our time, however, if there are any items you'd like to speak to. Then we move to our consent calendar. We have four items on tonight's consent calendar. They are a service signing bill for the detour work on Bremer Avenue during the fireman's convention. We have Feldman concrete bill to pay for sidewalk repairs. We have a wine permit for Meyer Pharmacy and a beer permit for Heritage Day's special event. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. Consent calendar is unanimously approved. Regular business item number one is a service agreement for our dam's submerged clamp nuts. Public, I hope you heard all that. City Administrator, for the public, what's the issue here?
It's merely routine maintenance. I know at the end of our packet online, Mike Cherry kind of put some pictures on so you can kind of see what takes place here. It involves divers, a very large torque wrench, and some bolts that have to be dismaintained as you go through the regular season. It is not in response to the recent
Okay.
water event. This was a predetermined, pre-scheduled amount of maintenance. So I don't know if Mike wants to add any more to it, but that's my understanding of what it is. Hopefully get you a shot of what we're talking about here.
Since our dam is relatively famous right now, it's probably good that we all listen for a second.
Well, I just, you've got the benefit of the photos, and I just want to share with them for the public. So this is the east side of the dam, and the bolts that we're talking about are along the very bottom here. And they, there's a series of clamps here. As you zoom in, you can start to see them along the bottom. And there are a total of 309 bolts. So this is a close-up of them. They're spaced approximately one foot apart. We're not worried about the smaller ones up here. It's the very large ones here. And the discoloration that you see on there is actually a bond breaker. It's, think of it a little bit like a grease. Because we don't want these rusting together, we actually coated them, pretreated them as it was being assembled. And without building a cofferdam, the only way to get down to them is with a diver. The depth of water is approximately seven and a half feet deep, so not terribly deep. You could stand up and stick your hand above the water. I think our perception is that it is much, much deeper than that, but it is not right up against the dam. So the process they use is you have a four-person dive team. Only one person is actually under the water. You have two observers, and then you have another diver ready to go in in the event anything happens. They are set up to do this when the water is cooler, but not when it's cold. So the best time to do this is typically in the fall. You usually think of the flow rates being lower, and the water is also more clear, and it's still relatively warm right now. The water temp is about 60 degrees. We anticipate the soonest that this work would be able to take place would be probably in about two weeks. And it only takes about, they're estimating two days worth of work.
Okay. Let's go directly to a motion that we can discuss.
I move Resolution 1681 approving the professional service agreement with GEO International LLC of Newton, Pennsylvania for the 2016 inspection and torquing of the submerged mounting clamp nuts on the Waverly inflatable dam for an estimated cost of $11,060.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion.
I just had a question about what's laid out here in terms of the pricing. So the overtime factor is just if it goes into overtime, is that correct? You're not planning to have it done on a weekend or nighttime or something?
That's, that's right. The $11,060 is actually, assuming there will be three days, they're thinking they can maybe get it done in two days, but they want to, you know, we're budgeting for three just in case. The way the pricing is set up is that you have a one-time cost of $2179. That's basically mobilization to get here. And then you have the four-man dive team. This is a per-day cost. And they're estimating eight to 12-hour day. Again, just depending on how things go right now, given the fact we've only got about 12 hours of daylight, I think that we're probably looking more in that eight, maybe 10-hour day. But that may be why it would kick over into a third day as well.
Rather than come back the next day, just... You mean it could all get done in one day?
No, no. But because we have less daylight this time of year, they have a shorter window of opportunity to work during the day, and so it may require that third day. And so then down at the bottom, you have like your hotel and your room and board costs, which is a per-day cost as well.
So Mike, the dam's five years old. Is this something we should expect every five years?
Yes. Just out of curiosity, are these bolts, are they stainless steel, or are they, are they going to ever need replacing?
The bolts cannot be replaced because they're embedded in the concrete.
I understand. That's what I mean. Are they stainless steel, or are they...
I don't recall offhand, but I know that they have been, when it was built, it was treated with, the threads were treated before the nuts were put on because it's not supposed to rust. So it's either galvanized or stainless steel. I can find out for you if you want to know.
I'm just curious. They are stainless?
They're stainless. I gave John the task of working on this project, so he scoped everything out for me.
I would think, given the application, that they would be stainless steel. You mentioned rust, and I thought that was odd because it'd be on...
Crud.
Crud. The process here is they will have a hose for water so that they can clean it off, because if there's any sand or grit or sediment down in there, they'll blow that off with a stream of water so that they can get the coupling on there, or the socket.
Other council discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Gade?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Resolution 16-81 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is to complete payments on our new airport runway. City Administrator, comments would be helpful here as well. This is pretty much a major accomplishment.
Yes, sir, it is. This is the final payment. We had a deduction increase, and this is kind of the net result of everything, to complete this project. So we're certainly glad it's done.
Formal motion?
I will move acceptance of Resolution 16-82, accepting the airport runway reconstruction as complete and approving change order number two in the amount of $5,217.50 decrease in a pay estimate number four of $13,870 as the sub-final payment. This is off my screen. I'm looking for the rest of the motion here. And number five of $37,530 as final payment to Concrete Foundations Incorporated of New Hampton, Iowa.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion?
I guess just for public information, we get 90% of reimbursed from the federal for this. So the total cost looks like it was, total cost for the project was around $1.7, $1.8 million, and the city of Waverly is paying $189,800 or so.
That's correct.
So the public's aware of that.
Thank you. That was helpful. Public input. Roll call, vote, please.
Excuse me. Share?
Yes.
Gade?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Lampy?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Resolution 16-82 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number three is a discussion of our 2016 flood. We all are kind of smiling, but we want to approach this more strategically and cover a lot of the bases on this. I think I'd like to lean on our city administrator to maybe start this off, lead us off.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and kind of run through how this went, start to finish. I know Mike will interject quite a bit with detail of how things occurred, some of the photos we have, some of the mapping that was used. And then I'll look forward to any comments from council or staff or the public as well. We first heard some of the initial rain reports. Of course, it was starting to cause concern here. Our watershed is very sizable. We look towards Austin, Minnesota, and Charles City. And then we also use Janesville as kind of a marker to adjust what we think our river levels will be. Unfortunate predictions that they made were about half of what the rain was that we actually received. So at that point in time, we definitely took notice as to what could be coming to city Waverly when it comes to the potential flooding. A lot of the predictions were much higher than were necessary. Some of the readings did not exactly gel with that, so we kind of took a little time to step back and say, is there really how high it's going to be? And then we assembled the various people from across the community for incident command, which there was a sizable amount of people there, probably 20, 30 people at some of these meetings, from police, fire, emergency management, ambulance service, hospital, some council, mayor, schools, utilities, gas and electric, and just a variety of people across the board to see what action was going to be needed. And of course, every group then has their own set of protocol, depending on what happens also. So as we go through these meetings, the goal was to determine what we thought a lot of the readings were coming in at, what we predicted, some of the depth of the water was going to get to. We used some of the inundation technology, I think that's the correct term, which the city's mapped at and compared to 2013 to get a base, and then moved accordingly to be able to demonstrate where that water would in fact go at certain levels of the river. It's fascinating technology. I'd not seen it myself prior to that, but very helpful. And so depending on what was being predicted, you could then adjust accordingly and determine how neighborhoods were going to be affected. So we would take input from each of those areas and determine what the best course of action was going to be, and at the end of it, we would determine the best information to put out to the public. And that happened twice a day through the entire event, into the weekend and even into Monday morning, Tuesdays, the water was receding. And so as I'm sure a lot of people are aware, we put out press releases, both radio, in paper form, email, whatever we could get out to the people to try and let them understand what was happening to the best of our ability. And we were pretty accurate for the most part, actually. Towards the end, right a day or so before the final cresting of the event, I think we're in, within about an inch, and I say we, actually Mike Cherry was within about an inch of predicting that height of that final level of water. So for days prior, we knew it was not going to exceed about a foot higher, and so that hopefully was helping the public understand this was not anywhere near a 2008 event. What complicated that was some of the events in Shell Rock, who set a record this year. Had that storm shifted east, I think we may have had a different event. And so we did have some luck from Mother Nature, so to speak, that it did stay more to the west, unfortunate for the people there. But that's where a lot of the confusion started initially, and there were a lot of reports of talk of 2008 and worse, and three times as bad, and all these kind of things. And so that's why we're very careful when we released information. It was accurate. It was something we could quantify. We could demonstrate exactly where it came from, based on the National Weather Service. And that's kind of how we proceeded throughout the week, I guess it was almost, or five days of the event itself. And during that time period, we talked about a lot of different things, from use of ESCO barriers to how fast the water is rising. And so on a brief summary, that's kind of how we started. And I know Mike has some documents he can put up here as well and kind of help to go through a little more details to how we went into the internal part of that meeting. But overall, I was very pleased with how staff performed and how the other agencies that were part of this did their job. In a very veteran group, unfortunately. It's not their first flood. They've been through many, and they knew exactly what to do, some of the premise, what certain levels of water would do, where it would get to, where it wouldn't. And it was very comforting knowing that that experience was at the table, this being my first Waverly flood, having gone through '08, and I was still at Blackhawk County. So all in all, it went as well as it could have. And I think at the end, the result was overall, as much as we could have anticipated, done very well. So I'm very pleased with that, and very proud of staff for how they performed and the information that was able to get out in the timely manner it could. So with that, I'll kind of let Mike run through a little more of the details, what we started with and how we ended up, kind of the process we used.
Thank you.
So we try to take something that is not exact science and try to make it as objective as possible, decision-making. So National Weather Service at 6:00 AM on Wednesday, September 21st, for the Des Moines Office published this prediction that Wednesday night going into Thursday and Thursday evening, the rainfall was going to stretch from the heaviest from Storm Lake to Mason City, Albert Lee, Rochester, and the southeastern Minnesota, that that's where the heaviest rainfall was going to fall. We also look at the La Crosse Office for the National Weather Service to see if their prediction or their forecast mirrors what is forecast for Des Moines. And so here's southeastern Minnesota, northeast Iowa, and southwestern Wisconsin. So they match up very, very well. The heaviest rainfall was supposed to occur in southeastern Minnesota. From that, the Des Moines Office and the La Crosse Office made predictions for Charles City and Janesville. Charles City forecasting comes out of the La Crosse Office. Janesville forecasting comes out of the Des Moines Office. They, in this situation, are looking at rainfall, you know, predict it rainfall, forecast it rainfall, 48 hours into the future. So the time of day on these predictions were September 21st at 9:16 in the morning for Charles City and 9:57 AM for Janesville. This was for rainfall that had not yet even hit the ground. And I want to go back to where it was forecast. The heaviest rain was forecast for along the Minnesota-Iowa border, in particular southeastern Minnesota. Our concern is the Austin area over here. That's kind of the headwaters for the Cedar River. Albert Lee, Albert Lee Lake is the headwaters for the Shell Rock River. So fairly close, but we're very sensitive as to where that rainfall does occur. This is the actual rainfall, not in southeast Minnesota, but in Butler County. Over 10 inches of rainfall occurred. The black contour, the black line here is representing the Cedar River watershed. Waverly is at the bottom here. To the left, that's Shell Rock. That's the Shell Rock gauge.
So you see a little bit of shift over to the east?
15 miles further east.
We have a problem.
We would have been in a real world of hurt.
Yep.
Okay?
Hmm.
So it's not an exact science, but yet we try to make objective decision-making. So when they made their forecast in the morning, it was brought to our attention. And given the forecasts and what they were predicting as potential river levels in Charles City and Janesville, we knew that that could have a very significant impact to the city of Waverly. So the decision was made to get our flood preparedness team together. There are 35 individuals that participated in these planning meetings, multi-jurisdictions and agencies. We had, within the city, we had representation from the Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Services, Leisure Services, Administration. Outside, but still within the city, we had the hospital. We had Waverly Utilities. Outside of there, we had Mid-American Gas. We had Bremer County Emergency Management, Kipladegi. And others within the city were also Economic Development, because this could have potential impact to our business and our business corridor. And so we even had, also had representation from the Chamber as well. So that any concerns or that were being raised by the business community, that whether they went directly to the city or went to the Chamber, that they would be able to have an outlet to express concerns or to get information as well. The initial meeting was held Wednesday afternoon on the 21st. And from that, we came out with amounts to like a unified press release. So coming out of those meetings, we want to speak with one, one voice, one message. And, and so this is, this is, you know, that first press release that came out, went out a little after 4:00 on Wednesday. And based off of, we always reference factual information, the most recent information that we had at the time we went into the meeting. So you'll always see that the way that these are worded is the National Weather Service is predicting heavy rainfall in the upper Cedar River watershed. You know, when, what does that mean? Based on the National Weather Service's river level predictions for Charles City and Janesville, city officials for Waverly are predicting that this is what it will mean for Waverly. And it was 14.1. The National Weather Service in these situations will update their models. I think it's very common for them to do it maybe twice a day, more frequently as they get new information. They have an extremely difficult, challenging job, because as we saw, to try to predict where, when, and how much can be very, very tricky with weather. Additionally, they're looking at what are the existing soil conditions, how saturated is the ground, and many, many factors going into it. So we look at them as the experts. We simply take their information and based off of our local experience, try to determine, well, what does that mean for Waverly? It's not an exact science, but we try to be objective. We have many different resources to go to. We don't latch on to the worst thing we hear out there. Sometimes we sit on the information, waiting for additional updates. So we, I think, like to do the twice-a-day meetings, because we have time. But sometimes, information changes more quickly, such as Friday evening, the river level was coming up much faster than was predicted by the National Weather Service. And so based on observations that we were seeing here with the river, it became very apparent that we were going to be in a situation where we were going to have to close access off to southeast Waverly Friday evening, not Saturday morning like we had originally thought.
Some of the predictors that we look at is, we're how far from Charles City? Is it 20?
We're, like to talk in terms of hours. We're 26 hours downstream of Charles City. We're six hours upstream of Janesville. And I won't go through all the graphs from the National Weather Service, but they were, as they were updating, things went from a bad prediction to a really bad prediction, and then started coming back down again. So with that first press release, we were at a Waverly gauge reading of 14.1, but by the following morning, they were then predicting that Charles City was going to be a couple feet higher. And we ended up revising our prediction to closer to 16 feet. We have flood inundation mapping that shows, this is all available on the web, that shows how it would impact the community. And so by Thursday morning, this is what we were, the information that was available out there, this is what we were starting to look at, was an inundation area that was matching closer to the 100-year flood of 1999. So, but then I think by later that evening, it had backed down. We were back down to a Waverly prediction of about 14.2 feet. So you can see the area has shrunk. And this is kind of where we were, we were stuck until we got into Saturday. And then by Saturday afternoon, we were then forecasting that it was going to crest at 13.2 feet. And so it was even less of an impact area. And we ended up cresting at 13.17. And we ended up cresting at thirteen point one seven. Within this area, the evacuation area, there are fifty-nine homes and twenty-four apartment units, and then the school. Very, very few people anywhere in town had issues with floodwater damaging their, their homes. The majority of what we have heard is related to groundwater. And that's because the river was up for such an extended period of time that, let's see if, yeah, so this was the, the first prediction for, for Janesville. It was just going to be an up and down. This more closely represents what happened to Janesville. So, where they were initially predicting they were going to be above the moderate flood stage for about eighteen hours, it ended up being above the moderate flood stage for almost three days. And that is reflective of what happened here in Waverly. So the longer the waters are high, you know, the southeast Waverly is on a loo-veal flood plain, so it's a lot of sand. And the longer it stays up, the higher the groundwater table goes, and the more the water That's about the extent to my presentation. As, as it relates to the planning meetings and discussions, I know that there was some discussion about Seventh Avenue and, and why we chose not to install HESCO barriers.
Correct. That was a discussion during the first meeting we had, and there was some prior experience with that. The problem a lot of times with that area is they're not going to hold forever. Water will overtop, water will find a way around. So it comes down to a timing issue. How long do you really have before that occurs? And that's some of what we had to discuss. And at one point in time, when the water was coming up, it was coming up a foot an hour. So with those barriers in place, you might have two or three hours, and that's it. So the manpower and resource to set them up, to have them fail in three hours, it was not going to be near the benefit that it might have been the first time out. And I believe even the first time they were used in thirteen, they were overtopped, and it creates kind of a flash flood atmosphere. When they bust through, everything in its way is getting swept into the river. People, vehicles, you name it, it's, it's heading to the river. And that's the unfortunate side of what those will do as well, depending on where they're set up. So Mike, some great photos of when they were initialized in two thousand thirteen.
Right. So in two thousand thirteen, the decision was made to, to deploy the HESCO barriers. And in this location, it requires about seven hundred linear feet. HESCO barriers, you've got close to half of, half a ton of sand per linear foot, so you're in the neighborhood of three hundred tons of sand. It's a skid loader operation. When we did this in two thousand, May of two thousand thirteen, we had every available person from public services engaged in this endeavor, and it was a day-long process to do this. So we had, I believe, fifteen employees dedicated for an entire day to installing these. This was a situation where it was going to be, based on the river level prediction, it was going to be iffy whether it would overtop them or not, the decision was made to, to deploy them. Because early on, the forecast was that we were going to blow past the point where these would provide any benefit, and that the, the projected rate of rise in the river was going to be such that it could be upwards of a foot per hour, it was going to be a lot of resources dedicated to something that would have very, very little benefit. You don't wait for them to overtop before you, you cut the traffic off. The failure is instantaneous. It is literally a flash flood situation, and there could have been concern of trapping hundreds of people in the southeast part of town with no way to, to get them out or get help to them. There's also concern that if it failed while there were vehicles on the road, that it could be more disastrous. So, very early on, based on the river level predictions, the decision was made not to deploy the HESCO barriers.
It was one of the hotter tourism places in Waverly, unfortunate too, at that time. So that kept people in the neighborhoods from getting out, as people, onlookers wanted to come by. We unfortunately had to have the police get involved, block off roads, check IDs. It's unfortunate you have to do that, but that's just the nature of what people like to do. And so, at that point in time, Mike and myself, on the Thursday night, were blocking traffic to let people out, as water was starting to come over the road, because they had been blocked in by the tourists that were down there viewing the water, which again, unfortunate, but not uncommon. It happens all the time. The other side of the barriers that we looked at is a lot of that activity was going to happen at night. And when it happens in the middle of the night, or in the dark, and you have that kind of a breach, that's even worse. That you have no idea, to see it coming. It's just, there it is, all of a sudden, and now you have water rushing where it shouldn't. So I think it was the right decision to make. It certainly could have provided a few hours more access to the road, but at that quick a pace, it was really hard to say how long it really would have been. And so, that's kind of the reason that they were not deployed. You know, fortunately for a lot of the southeast area, it was really an access issue, more so than it became a river water issue, or it became a groundwater issue for a lot of residents down there. So Mike, you might want to run through access, kind of how it starts to close out, and how it kind of recedes back in.
Yep. So, and this was, this, this is where we ended up, at thirteen point two feet. And the water starts by encroaching in this area and overtopping Seventh Avenue. And once it overtops Seventh Avenue, it, it races down through Crestwood Park, across Fourth Street, and then back into the river. And there's, there's about two feet of elevation difference in the river as it flows from here down to here. So, there, this does carry quite a bit of current, because it's a much shorter distance, and you have a two feet of elevation drop. Now what you do see is, is in this situation, Third Street Bridge is, is still open. You go a foot higher, and then we're into a situation where it's over the approaches and it's over the deck of the bridge. One of the comments or concerns that was brought up is that, you know, if, if the Third Street Bridge had been repaired, it'd be open, and that would be an access into the neighborhood. The thing about this level is, if, if the water level had been a foot lower, we probably could have kept it open. It would have been really close. But at the level we encountered, the bridge still would have ended up closed. And I want to...
We're talking in its prior state, not its current state. We've had it opened during its, had it repaired state.
Yeah. Either, think of two thousand thirteen, or because we closed it in two thousand thirteen, and it still would have been closed. And we want to share why. And it would still be closed today. Because you end up with debris that gets caught underneath the bridge. So this was a picture taken last Friday of the debris that is, is caught underneath the bridge. Here's another photo. And then, I want to show you this one here. This is a tree that is caught up underneath the bridge. So, there's a lot of debris that gets caught in a truss bridge like this, underneath on the floor beams and the deck. This is what, one of the things that we are very, very concerned about, because this has happened at least ten times since the bridge was constructed. And we've been, I think, very fortunate that we haven't sustained serious damage to the structure. But trees, debris, do come down the river, do catch on structures like this, and can cause issues. So, what you see here is that we're still, last Friday, we were still flooded underneath. You cannot open the structure until you've cleared the debris and you've inspected the bridge. So, depending on, on how high the river gets, how much debris, how long it takes to, for the river to go down, it, it would, could be weeks in this situation. You know, we're still ten days, and we can't get to it to clean the debris.
Just to clarify, because I was asked, while it would have possibly been able to stay open to vehicle traffic, we still could have gotten Waverly Utility trucks across it to keep electricity on longer, or emergency vehicles there, those type of things, so...
So with the, the current bridge, you know, fire trucks and Waverly Utilities trucks cannot get across the bridge. So you'd be back into the same situation. At the point the river would want to start crossing Seventh Avenue, they would have to look at disconnecting the power, because at the point, the river is across both these roads, they do not have access to disconnect the power. And the concern is if the water is going to continue to go higher. Again, at, at this stage, Friday evening, we were still looking at, at this situation here, with it being a foot higher, somewhere around the fourteen point two feet level.
So, so I think what you're saying is, we don't know yet whether there is any more structural damage to the Green Bridge since the flood.
I, I'm not terribly concerned about it, because our project is to, it, it literally removes and replaces all the floor beams, all the stringers, the entire deck and support system. It's, the trusses up above that are going to remain.
Right.
It's, it's more of into the future, because our, even a repaired bridge is still susceptible to, to this type of, of a flood event.
And just theoretically, I'm just curious, if, if this were a, or had been a new bridge along the lines of one of the options that we had, how, if at all, would anything have changed with regard to this flood?
Well, with a, the new bridge that was proposed, it would certainly have remained open in this situation that we went through. And you would not have had to disconnect the power, because you would have had access for Waverly Utility Vehicles. So, at the point, the river would have been forecast to go a foot higher, I think we would have been still okay, that in this situation here, because we're, we're rebuilding the approaches and we're elevating the bridge significantly, it would be okay. At the point, we were, to get back to the initial prediction, which was more representative of a nineteen ninety-nine Hundred Year Flood, it would have been closed. It would have been closed to pretty much all but emergency vehicles, like they did in Waterloo and Cedar Rapids.
And just for clarification, even at a nineteen ninety level, Hundred Year Flood level, the dam would protect northwest and southwest, correct?
Correct. Southwest would have looked like this. So, from about Fourth Avenue south along the Dry Run Creek, there would have been some impact. There may have been some flood damage to adjacent properties and from Fourth Avenue on down.
I think that's just a key point to keep reminding the community. I saw some social media posts where it was referencing nineteen ninety-nine, and I think folks in northeast and, or northwest and southwest were envisioning pre-dam impacts, those type of things, so...
We have ten to twelve thousand sandbags that are in pristine condition and were never touched by floodwaters. I think we also want to talk about...
Which is fine, though. Cedar Falls does even more than that, because it never got above their dikes, so...
Yeah, and I was just there, and they're still there.
Better be safe than sorry.
Yeah, they're all lined up.
Yeah, they're still there in Cedar Falls.
Got a big sandbox? We've got something we can do for you.
Now, this leads into, we've, we've done studies on the Cedar River. We built an inflatable dam that provides us tremendous flood protection. It was literally almost a hundred percent federally funded. City did end up paying about two percent of that total project cost. We then moved on to the Dry Run Creek. That project is, is basically done. We still need to finish up the FEMA map revision, but it is providing flood protection today. We will receive the benefit of the map revision in about a year. So with that project being done, the third and final area that is a focus, and was also studied, is southeast Waverly. In two thousand ten, in March of two thousand ten, there was an effort to address concerns that southeast Waverly residents had. Part of this was accomplished by, with the Hazard Mitigation River Use Commission. So in March of two thousand ten, the commission was created and the members appointed. One of the first things that they took under their, their projects was southeast Waverly. And we went through the consultant selection process. A couple of the members were part of that, as well as council members. Gene Lieb was, was the council liaison to the commission. And AECOM out of Waterloo was selected for that process to investigate southeast Waverly. The council had already heard from another consultant who had done the hydraulic modeling on the Cedar River, would have been instrumental in modeling the Cedar River and the Dry Run Creek. That was going to be very challenging to come up with cost-effective ways of protecting southeast Waverly. It was felt important to get a second opinion. So, the consultant selection committee, which was comprised of Hazard Mitigation Commission members, city council members, and city staff, chose AECOM for that. So, the final report presentation was presented to the city council in May of two thousand eleven. Again, here you can see kind of the milestone dates of, of going through that. One thing I want to point out is that in November of two thousand ten and February of two thousand eleven, there were public open houses. There were noifications sent to southeast Waverly citizens, basically everyone within the impacted area, which was the, the area here in southeast, but also on the north side, up in this area as well. They were all invited, encouraged to attend and participate. What I want to share with you here is the minutes from that council meeting when the final presentation was given. Because I want you to see that these aren't my words. These are Carla's.
Joe's.
Or Joe's? Okay. Joe. So this was final present, report presentation, Southeast Waverly Flood Protection Study. This was May twenty-third of two thousand eleven. We have put this report on the city's website. But what I want to point out here is, let's see if I got it here, go up. The Hazard Mitigation River Use Commission concluded that improvements to the Dry Run Creek Channel were a better cost, were a better cost benefit to the community than the southeast Waverly Flood Protection Project. Flood Protection Project. The flood protection improvements for Southeast Waverly were extremely expensive. We also had Southeast Waverly residents that objected to the flood protection because it would mean that there would be levees and flood walls placed between their house and the river. They understood the risk. Many of them had the flood insurance, and they were willing to accept that. So from that, it's not that the commission and the council turned their back on Southeast Waverly. Again, remember, this is 2011. They chose to focus in on the Dry Run Creek. And two years later, the funding mechanism for the Dry Run Creek came together. It became a project, and over the last two construction seasons, we've been working on building those improvements. Are there potentially flood mitigation projects for Southeast Waverly that should be considered, revisited, vetted, reassessed? Absolutely. Absolutely. And going forward, we think that it should be considered, and that there may be some very cost-effective, very beneficial improvements that maybe can't provide 500-year or 100-year, but maybe can provide some help for the type of event we just went through on September 24th, which is very similar to the event we went through in May of 2013, which is very similar to the events we went through in April and August of 1993. So we've had six events in the past 23 years that have created this situation. Four of those are very similar to what we have here. And there are, I believe, infrastructure improvements that can be done to help these out, where it can be done so it's done economically and still provide a meaningful benefit. I think that's the end of our-
No, that's, the whole thing was just wonderful and detailed, and these are the questions that maybe not everyone thought of, but they would eventually think of them. So it's nice to have a full presentation. Council, on the way in? And ask the public, you can be thinking as well if you have any questions of this, of us at this time, too. But I want the council to first, anymore.
Well, Mike, your comment does raise a question for me. What economically affordable remedies do you envision that we might consider for Southeast Waverly?
I think that's for the community and the council to decide what they're willing to afford. We can run the full gamut from, you know, $50,000 project to, you know, and these are estimates from five years ago, you know, maybe a $50,000 improvement up to a nine-and-a-half million dollar improvement. It's up to the community and up to you to decide the public policy and what you're willing to put towards it, not me.
The full-blown report, when it was finished, was in the nine-and-a-half million range to completely vet out the flood area because of the magnitude of the berms and the walls that would have to be built and the length. But there are smaller sections of it that we've kind of looked at that may be identifiable that would be far less and possibly have some beneficial impact, not, of course, the entire region, but again, some areas that are key, such as Seventh Street and others. But we would want council and others to look through that and determine what would be investigated and what would not. We would not want to-
Seventh Street or Seventh Avenue?
Avenue. I get my streets and avenues mixed up, my southeast, my southwest. But have them look at that and determine what would be good going forward, whether it's a work session, a committee, something of that nature to help with this versus Mike or myself or staff to say, this is what we should do. Because there are a variety of options based on that report. You break them down to singularity instead of the full encompassing event, which is in the many, many millions. So that's kind of the gist of where we are.
In talking to a few people, they were very appreciative of the information that the city put out, the facts, those type of things. Gave them time to get things out of their basement, prepare a little bit. I think we caught a few people off guard with the Friday evening versus Saturday morning, but again, in talking to a few folks that live up in there, they understood, and for the most part, they're ready. About the only comment I've heard is, we know what the Hesco barriers can do, they understand the effort to put them up, but that area there may lend itself to some type of dike berm where you could put some type of floodgates in at the sidewalk, in at the street, those type of things. That's really the only comment I heard was, oh, they'd like a few more hours to get in and out of the neighborhood, if we could do something a little more permanent there.
That's one of those things we're-
The effort, I think.
Etching against right there, just to look at.
So that's this short little levee right here.
In lieu of-
In lieu of the Hesco.
That'd be a permanent levy instead of-
And that, that's the one I allude to being, is it 50,000, 100,000? It's low cost that could provide tremendous benefit.
And there really, there really aren't any homes along the north side, right, except for the one up on the hill?
No, you just got the one, the one house right here.
Right, okay.
And as far as the height, I do have the information. So here's that house that you see, here's First Street, Dry Run Creek. So we're talking a levee that at, at the low spot in the road, the levee would be four, maybe five feet tall. And by the time you get over to First Street, it may only be a foot and a half, two feet tall. And you could conceivably sandbag across kitty corner, across the intersection over to Ramker May Storage, where you see the elevation is, is up to where we would not have any issues.
So certain events, this would actually keep that water out of it unless it gets to the height over-
Now, what, what's going to happen is like when we had the Hesco barriers, the water, you know, I talked about that two-foot elevation difference in the river, and so the water starts to come back this way through Crestwood. So you start getting backwater flowing this way, and eventually it will overtop Seventh Avenue and get within two feet of the water elevation on the other side of the berm. But it gets you more time.
But what is the impact of the water that normally would flow across Seventh Avenue?
Right.
Or has got to go somewhere?
This is why the project didn't go anywhere in five years ago in 2011, is there are some people that feel that the water that's cutting through here, if it's kept within the Cedar River, is going to increase the elevation of the Cedar River. Okay?
Which would increase the elevation at Third Street.
So the question is-
Eventually, like to your point, it would come back underneath and-
It's going to come back around.
Right.
Yeah. It's, it's not going to reduce the elevation. The question is, how much is going to increase it? Is it going to increase it a quarter inch? Is it going to increase it two inches? They can model it to determine that.
So would it be better to actually create a path for it that way? That would still allow access on Seventh Avenue?
Which would be to-
To be, to raise that up and let-
Raise the roadway?
Right.
And allow the water to go underneath?
Right.
So build a bridge.
Channel under or a box called, or something similar to what's on Dry Run Creek. I was just curious.
I would say do the modeling to see how much benefit would be gained. Because berming it, it, I don't even know if it would register in the modeling. You know, if you've got 30, 35,000 cubic feet per second going, going there, how much is cutting across Seventh Avenue? Is it 1,000? Is it 2,000 cubic feet? It may be a negligible amount compared to what continues to go down the Cedar River. Let the modeling determine what that impact would be.
I think if that was a feasible option, that's what we would probably go and do, is see what the modeling looks like. That other variable considered, would it be a covert? Could that be an issue? And you would just have those options to look at. But I think that's one of the areas we kind of identified that it could benefit. It's what we're doing with the barriers, anyway. You just have a permanent one there. But again, how much, how long it would last, that would all have to be engineered out.
Do we have any idea how many of the original committee that was put together in 2010 would still be in that neighborhood? I'm just thinking, what's our next step here? Do we re-engage the neighborhood to see if they ever want to do anything? And if we do, do we have a group that already has some of the history, some of the understanding of the most recent study that would be willing to pick it up and?
We also need to remember that what Mike was saying about people who live on the river, Dan and I are both in that category. We love the view. We love the beauty and-
It's not last weekend.
A little up close and personal.
I don't think we're going to, we're not going to make any decisions tonight, but I mean, I was real happy with how things went. I mean, as far as, you know, the support from the community is an awesome, always, you know. To your point, you know, you mentioned earlier that, you know, it'd be nice to get a little bit more control of the ansipers, but you also, you know, there was groups of, you know, high school, college kids walking through the neighborhood. You know, they came to my door two or three times, different groups, you know, can we help? Can we help? It was absolutely, it's an awesome thing, you know. And thank you to everybody that did lend a help.
One of my observations that I saw very different about the flood preparedness this time. People took effort first to get their belongings up out of harm's way. Second was then to consider sandbagging. They made the right choice. In this situation, sandbagging wasn't even necessary for, for majority of the people, if not all of them. The issues that we had were related to groundwater, and that may be a result of no power for sump pumps. So it's a triple threat. It's the surface water, it's the groundwater, it's the sewer backup.
How much infiltration did you have in the sanitary sewer? Is that we weren't to maximum flow or anything?
Yeah, we were, we were cranking at maximum capacity in our main lift station. And we always, after these events, assess, check, inspect, try to identify where it's coming in. You know, these houses that had groundwater with no one there, it was probably going right down into the floor drain. That's going to happen. You get enough of that, and then you start having potential sewer backup issues in other homes. So we want to do everything possible to minimize and mitigate the inflow, whether it's through, you know, manholes, pipes, but also on the residential side, you know, floor drains and those types of things, because that's also where it can come back up through and impact others. So shout out to everyone who, step one, get your belongings up out of harm's way. Other simple things that you can do, too, is you're going to have to make a decision if you have to leave, do you, do you throw a sandbag over your floor drain? If you got groundwater, the groundwater has nowhere to go. But if you got sewer backup, the sandbag over the floor drain helps out there. So we want to find solutions and ways that we can keep the power on as long as possible.
I think kudos, thank you, on bringing up Workburg College. They were up on Mine Street, helping people out right and left, and not only just nicely helping, but they just had a bond with people that made everything feel good. I know in the Big Six where they took in water, we need to do acknowledgement, KWAY, that's coordinated with Workburg. They, the suitors called in 15 minutes later, they were carrying things out of the basement to the upper floor, and that was a big walk-around. So these were really positive things. For those of us who had the privilege of going to the sandbagging area and watching 60 people working full speed ahead without bumping into each other, it was uplifting. It was really almost emotional. So there's the city pulling together that we need to also acknowledge in this discussion.
No, I definitely attest to that. I mean, it did pull together, and it was, it was good to see. Good to see.
Any other comments? Public, would you like to ask any questions that we didn't answer? I know we have some people here who are interested in the southeast, north-southeast.
I'd just say, I, I'm assuming we would have used the Hesco barriers like we did a couple of years ago, but since the water rose so fast, that was the reason we decided not to do it. But that would have gave us, on a normal rising flood, that wasn't a foot per hour, gives you a couple, gives you, like last time, it gave us, I don't know, six, seven, eight hours of extra time on that road than, than what it was before, but.
Yeah, it's going to be case by case, based on the information that's coming in.
Yeah, because it just rose much faster than what originally was anticipated, so.
I think the timing happening at night makes a difference, too.
Yep.
When it goes, it goes, and if it's pitch blackout, you do not want to be anywhere near that. And that's, that's also difficult to predict that.
We have less time. Cedar Rapids put them all up and used them, and they worked great, but they also had, you know, weeks ahead of time than what we did.
Absolutely.
And Wes, given our experience in 2013, our recommendation, my recommendation, is, is to give serious consideration to building a permanent levy that can provide the same benefit without, you know, like I said, it takes a tremendous amount of resources, both in personnel, equipment, to put them up, as well as to remove them.
Yep. No, I definitely agree with that, especially just on Seventh, right there, it makes, makes a lot of sense, so.
River helps with the removal, yeah.
Yeah.
There's sand in Brookwood.
Relocates it.
There's what we do with all those sandbags. We build a beach on, above the dam, Coleman Park, and go back to 1920s.
We need a beach or not.
I've got a, I've got a new beach.
Do you have one?
Oh, yeah.
Want to expand it? Because we got sand.
Last call for public. Thank you. We have the Library Board Trustees' Minutes for August 9th. Any comments on them? Officially received. Staff comments?
I don't think we have any more, sir, unless staff has anything they want to add. I think we're fine, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just one, one quick thing. FEMA is going to be meeting with Mike and my staff this next week because basically the only public property that was damaged was the Lee Fields and Brookwood Park, and we probably have more sand in Brookwood Park this year than we had in 2008. So we'll see what FEMA has to say about that.
That, that's on the public assistance side. I thought you were going to talk about Thursday, when they're going to be in the Civic Center.
Thursday and Friday, right?
Okay.
I saw something in the Civic Center, Thursday and Friday.
I just happened to be in the office when they were getting things lined up to rent the Civic Center, or use the Civic Center, not rent it. But that is for personal property damage, and it's not just for Waverly area residents, it's for anyone affected within the region that they can come on Thursday and Friday, that they will be here, so.
I think it's 11 to 8 p.m.
And they have, it's, it's about personal property damage, but it's also on assistance, whether it- whether it be the need for shelter, food, clothing, those types of things, or I think they're also set up for mental health services as well.
No, I think we're done with our comments, sir.
Thank you. Council comments, Edie or Dan?
I don't have any, thank you.
There was some discussion, I think, a couple of weeks ago, Mike, about the timing on the light, or if then Bremer Avenue, has anything been done with that yet?
No, I've been a little preoccupied, but we'll, we'll work on that, yes. Fifth Avenue Northeast, construction of the box culvert is probably approaching two-thirds of the way done. Hope that by next week, they'll be starting to do the backfilling, and maybe in about three weeks, we'll have it open.
I just want to second the comments about the good work that the Workburg College students did. It reminded me that students at Workburg haven't changed much since I was there, and we would do anything to get out of class. But that doesn't take away from their good work.
Thank you, Mike. Dan?
Hopefully, the public's aware that on Saturday, from 11 to noon, the Waverly Area Veterans Post is kind of kicking off their new facility and inviting the public out for a special presentation and a tour, so. I got to walk through it while they were painting it, and it looked pretty awesome then. I can only imagine what it looks like now with furniture and all the interior done on it. So if you're not doing things from 11 to noon on Saturday, stop by the new Veterans Area Post.
They're doing breakfast before that, too.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think until 10:30, breakfast goes.
I was just going to say what Dan said about Veterans Post opening up, it's kind of a big dedication, and I know there's probably going to be some United States senators and congressmen and big names there to open it up, since it's a pretty big deal, so. Hopefully, come out at 11 a.m. and take a tour and see our veterans really available.
Thank you.
Last comment, this is for the public. One of the strengths of Waverly is increasingly, we're thinking local on a lot of our shopping. Obviously, we have a whole wide arena to shop in, and we all shop the whole valley. In fact, the valley's coming our way, too. But as we approach the Bremer Avenue redo, it's going to be extra important that we start to think, I want to do this several months ahead, that our local merchants are going to need an extra support for maybe a couple of years. And I don't want that just to be a last moment thing, and, oh, yeah, don't forget. So let's all kind of be thinking in those terms, how important it is, because we're offering so much good shopping here in Waverly already, and that, that deserves us consciously thinking ahead a little bit. End of comments. Motion to adjourn.
So move. Second, seconded, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Close with no. Adjourn.